Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Zalada.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Coche.
Here.
Liza. Janutus.
Here.
Posar.
Here.
I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Liza for tonight by Posar, second by Saunders. Call roll.
Saunders?
Yep.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Counsel, you have the minutes of the work session of September 18th, 2017. Any changes, corrections? Seeing none. Call roll please. Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion. Motion by Spinks, second by Janutus.
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Counsel, you also have the minutes of the regular meeting of September 18th, 2017. Any changes, corrections to that? Seeing none. Motion for acceptance by Saunders, second by Posar. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
We have no presentations tonight. Get on with the whole business. Ordinance number 9512-17.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept the donation of the real property located at 83 Henry Street regarding permanent parcel number 81414-063 from the city's land bank and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Zalada, second by Spinks. Call roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada? Yes. Spinks?
No.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
No.
Posar?
No.
This is just...
This is suspension?
This is just a suspension, yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. This is a suspension. Okay.
Make a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Spinks, second by Janutus. Little confusion. Call the roll.
To reconsider Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Now, motion for third and final. By Saunders, second by Zalada. And I think it's our wish that we find out some issues with this piece of property. It's our wish to defeat that tonight, turn it back over to the... Put it in the county's hands. Call the roll please.
Saunders?
No.
Zalada?
No.
Spinks?
No.
Coche?
No.
Janutus?
No.
Posar?
No.
Ordinance number 9518-17.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with TRW Construction for the demolition of 38 Gould Avenue, known as permanent parcel number 811-21-029, declaring an emergency.
Have motion for suspension. By Zalada, second by Spinks. Call roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. By Janutus, second by Spinks.
Thanks, Mayor. This property has been a serious nuisance for upwards of four years. It is currently vacant and unvacant. It actually, the note was purchased by the mortgage holder, who, as I've said before, I believe merely treats this as a number. They've done little, if not zero, efforts to remediate the property. It wasn't until they were notified that second reading took place and in two weeks we were intending to demolish this, that we started getting frantic correspondence. It is still our intention to demolish it. However, we did exchange communication with them last week regarding items that we must see in good faith completed. If we are going to work with them to allow them to save the property, I'll be getting an update from the building commissioner in the morning and then we'll move forward. And I will, Councilman Saunders, I'll check on the length of this contract. I believe it's 90 days, but I'll verify that.
Thank you. Call the roll please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9524-17.
Amending ordinance number 3457-69 passed December 1st, 1969, modifying section 151.26 entitled Hospitalization for Counsel and Municipal Court Judge and Declaring an Emergency.
Our wish puts us on second reading. Motion to do such. By Zalada, second by Janutus. Frank, you want to speak on these...
What, next to... We've not really moved the microphone, but you know, I make a very terrible noise, so we're not going to touch that today. You know what I'm talking about. First, in regards to the next two ordinances and how the compensation package accounts. The terms of office are set for the elections and all that. You can't change your compensation while you're in office, okay? So to make it clear that you can't give yourself a raise while you're in the middle of your term of office, that's a no-no in the state law. In looking at these ordinance, those before the next election, that would affect the four seats that are up for election this year, council has looked in regards to healthcare and the cost that had been escalating and the costs we've had in the last three years. Current claims and administrative costs have reached $150,000 for six members in the last two years and this current past year was $240,000. So as costs escalate, costs escalate, you need to take a look at that in regards to council. Give them credit. They're looking at a hard subject to do and looking at their own benefit package to reduce it. And in doing so, we're looking at where council should be in reform of compensation in regards to buying insurance, buying their... Being able to keep up with costs of living. And we looked at that in regards to the salaries. So we looked at this, the increase was $50,000 for seven members of council with $600 month increase. And in line with the costs of these... Costs of medical and giving this benefit up, starting in 2018 for the four seats that would occur then, and two years later, the other three seats would have the same package given to them or taken away, however you want to look at it. In line with that, that is what we are looking at for the savings of the cost to the city. So you're looking at netting almost... In the last three years, if we'd have done this, we'd have netted $390,000 in savings. So it is substantial in the amount that's been happening. Where we're going, we don't expect cost decrease. So at this point in time, council is addressing this issue with these two ordinances. And so we're hashing out right now as we speak in regards to this. So council's looking at for second reading tonight in regards to the hospitalization being ceasing in 2018 for four seats and then again with the other three seats in election in, I believe it's 19. And the same with the amounts of salaries that would be commensurate with that when the new terms begin. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Just pray for it.
Thank you. Call the roll please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9525-17.
Modifying the salaries of the mayor and council for the terms commencing on or after January 1st, 2018 and January 1st, 2020 and declaring an emergency.
Have a motion for suspension? Or, excuse me, motion for second reading? By Spinks, second by Janutus. We heard the explanation from the finance director.
Yeah, the correction was 2020 would be the next effect of the next ruling, yes, on election of the 19th.
Call the roll please.
Saunders?
No.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, guys. Just a couple items I want to address. Friendly reminder, this weekend will be our Children's Fall Festival that the staff members in the city puts on. I don't think it's going to be heavy like today, but hopefully the weather will hold out. That starts at 10 o'clock on the square. We do have this week is the last week for the chipper service, so if anybody has any debris, get that out there. Contact our service department as well. They will be going around the whole city, but it's very, very helpful if you contact them and get your address on the list and they'll be out there. This is the last week gearing up towards next week. As the leaves are beginning to fall, we will have our first leaf trucks out, so if you get that, the leaves out to the tree lawn will be canvassing the city. We're probably only going to put one or two trucks out to start, and then as it gets... We get further into the season, we'll have all four out. But we'll start that next week. I did want to reference something I put in the memo last week. The city and police departments really been trying to crack down on solicitors. We've had some instances and issues of solicitors going around town that are unregistered, as well as individuals that have nothing to do with the city, who are acknowledging that they're working with the city and that we have actually seen trying to enter a home. We actually arrested that individual last week. And we've also given three citations. So understand that solicitors have to be registered in the city. If you have any questions or concerns about anybody coming around, or if you see them on your street, you know, ask them, or if they come to your door. If not, give us a call, call dispatch, contact City Hall, and we'll make sure we get someone out there to check on it. We're looking at some other ideas for the future, possibly some type of land year that really helps identify those solicitors as they come around town, but that would be, you know, potentially in 2018. And we're going to look at, kind of see what we can do. But the city is not working with anybody to send out as far as AT&amp;T or ABT security. We are not doing that. So anybody that comes to your home and says they're working with the city of Bedford, or that is completely false, tell them have a nice day and contact us, and we'll take it from there. So just a little... We are making some progress as far as sending that message. End of report.
One point that religious or political do not have to be registered.
Thank you.
So we have some of our people running for office who we're not going to arrest them for. It's all okay.
Thank you.
It's all okay.
The end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lauder.
Just briefly, I was reading the Aurora newspaper, and they have problems with people breaking into their cars, just like we're having. It must be something related to the opiate crisis is what I would guess, but it's happening in other communities as well. Trying the best to crack down on it. Other than that, Coche, I end of report. Thank you.
If I could just make one other announcement. At the end of the day, we did, if anybody was wondering, we did get notifications through all of our city flags. We sent staff members out there about 5:30 today, obviously due to the tragedy in Las Vegas, and obviously our thoughts and prayers go out to those affected.
Mr. Finance Director.
Yes, the tax department did send out some letters last week in regards to renters, our folks who are renting houses and or facilities. We sent about 30 letters in regards to the new updates in the tax laws. And in that, it has them letting us know who the tenants are, except requirements that we didn't know. So that is a proper letter that is been sent out to the public. So just wanted to let people know that we're just trying to get information from the landlords as to who's in there, owning their houses and buildings.
Thank you. Counsel, Mr. Saunders.
Yes. First off, as you notice, I'm wearing a pink shirt. I don't normally wear pink, but October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And some of you know that I lost a sister who started out with breast cancer, so in her memory today, I'm wearing the pink shirt, so. Mike, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but county council has before them a ordinance to raise the registration fee for automobiles by five bucks. That fee is to be used for road repairs and pavement. Can we contact them again and hopefully get at the top of the order when they pass this thing, because it looks like they are going to pass it, so that we can get some of that money to repair things like Union Street that is really in very bad shape. They've been complaining they don't have any money. If this will bring in enough money to start doing some of the repairs, it's actually a better way to do it than gasoline tax increases, because as most people are aware of, your cars today use a lot less gas. So the gas taxes gone now, many people have electric vehicles or alternate fuel vehicles, and they technically don't pay any taxes whatsoever to keep the roads repaired. So the state did pass, or allow counties to raise the registration fees by five bucks, and kind of the county's going to be one of the first ones to do it, probably because they need it. So if we could get ahold of them and see if we can get back in the line of, I don't know, I'm sure every community and county is eventually going to approach them on it, but let's be first if we can.
They, we actually did send notification out, as you know, as we have every year, primarily for two county roads, Union Street and Solon Road. Both are in very bad shape. Obviously, we've been pushed, those have been pushed back, pushed back. And now, our correspondence this year was, they simply don't have the funding. What we're doing is, we're looking at a project for issue two funds, which is a grant, which is a grant that Frank and myself and Public Works are working to put together. And that's kind of a full replacement of the water line, which runs from Broadway up to Northfield on Union, and a complete resurfacing. Obviously, I'm not entirely for spending money on county roadways, but our thought is, even when they do get money, odds of them coming in and putting Bedford first, saying, hey, we'll do Solon and Union, probably isn't going to happen. But our thought is, if we can tap into a grant, and we know the water line is our responsibility, so if we can do the water line and then do the road, look like we're kind of doing a solid and taking care of a county road, then maybe we can get Solon. It's kind of our thought process. But we'll for sure stay on them. It's good that they're putting together a plan for that. I think Union is in poor shape, and we can't really wait any longer.
And squeaky wheel sometimes works well with county. I've already talked to our county councilwoman about it too. So hopefully, we can get at least something done here, because let's face it, some of these roads are starting to deteriorate significantly. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Zalada.
Thank you. I want to comment, thanks for all being here, because I think it's a nice crowd tonight. Secondly, all the events on the square this summer and early fall have been great, and there've been people in this room that have done things, one of them being David Neff. He and his wife have had a nice produce stand, and I think it was wonderful. And I myself have not gotten down there, but I see it on this book. And it really looked nice, and we appreciate anything you do. They had a yoga class, I think that was conducted by Heather Young. And so it was really good for the city, and we appreciate it. The shred day that the city sponsored last weekend, yeah, last weekend, that was great success. And they got, a lot of people got rid of a lot of papers, and it's a really good service. I hope you took advantage of it. I was going to mention the Fall Fest next weekend, Saturday, is that Saturday? On the commons. And once again, I'm so delighted for the Indians, Coche.
Thank you. Mr. Spinks.
The Fall Fest was this weekend, this Saturday.
This coming year?
Yeah, this coming up Saturday.
That's what I meant.
Which I will be down there. Painting faces is always doing, one of my favorite things to do each year. Been doing it, what, Mike, about four or five years now? Really fun. But I always have the longest line, I love that. Part goes out to the families that have lost loved ones in that senseless shooting in Las Vegas. Touch on it very deeply, because I have this sister who's lived out there for 35 years, did have a nephew that was attending a function out there next door, and God was nowhere near the fire, did hear it. So he's safe and sound. I do have a brother who's out there, several nieces and nephews out there. So just a senseless, senseless thing that happened, just breaks my heart. Also touching on what Mr. Johnson said about in breast cancer awareness, a dear friend of our city and a dear friend of mine, Kitty Yuko's wife, started her chemo treatments today for breast cancer. And Senator Yuko himself is a cancer survivor, just last year. So cancer has really affected their family. And Senator Yuko is at Bedford Heights now with the town hall meeting about the opium classes, which I wouldn't have attended, but come to this meeting. So, which is a very, also thing that has affected our city big time. So kudos to Senator Kitty Yuko for doing that tonight with his wife starting her first treatment today. He just does a lot for our state. So kudos to him, and I appreciate what he does. And end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. Just a quick question for our city manager. We had a discussion earlier about the point of sale inspections, and is my understanding that with some changes that we have made to our ordinance, that the court allowed us to continue our... To resume our point of sale inspections? Now, is that, and we talked about this a little earlier, is that only on a voluntary basis? No, we're just resuming back to the way we had been?
Yeah, we will be resuming. We haven't yet, because there's another piece of that suit that is still ongoing. It was a two-part lawsuit. It was determined that we are able to, that it was not a violation of constitutional amendment to conduct point of sales, and we will be resurrecting that, but we're not going to do that until both parts of the case are completely closed.
I see. Okay, thank you.
That's about all I can elaborate on, I'm sorry.
We're still doing exterior.
We're still doing exterior, yes. And if anybody, which we do have a lot of, people call us and ask us to do the point of sale, then we'll absolutely go do that.
With the sun going down sooner now, of course, and the furnace kicking on this morning, I'm reminded the growing season is beginning to come to an end. And I'm immensely grateful to have joined in growing a great amount of food this season, and my hands are sore from picking all the vegetables. But I'd like to thank also, War Two resident, Mr. David Neff, and his family for providing their surplus produce in order to help establish the Saturday morning farmer's market, and that has been greatly appreciated by so many of us. It's not easy to grow a lot of vegetables at home. I would be... I wouldn't spare any of the vegetables that I grow at home. I give a lot away, but not enough to sell. I also want to thank Ms. Heather Young for donating her time and experience for yoga in the park on these Saturday mornings. Yoga, which has already swept the nation, is probably the fastest and most proficient way to good health in body, mind, and spirit. And don't ever think that you're not flexible enough to do yoga, because that's exactly why you should be doing it, to get flexible. I highly recommend it to everyone. Thanks to David and Heather, these are just two examples of citizens bringing their skills and talents from the margins to the center to help and restore their community. So I'm very thankful for that. Tomorrow, I'll be attending an access to supermarkets and healthy foods discussion of examples of successful supermarket implementation initiatives, with an overview of data collected and mapping conducted by the Cuyahoga County Board of Health. All leading to the goal of providing healthy food, jobs, community services, and economic stability for neighborhoods. This is all in association with the recent purchase of the empty Meadowbrook Strip Plaza by a local grocer, who will be opening a new supermarket there. So I'm convinced we will begin to see in the upcoming year the effects of all the feverish, hideous efforts by our city manager and the current administration, especially around the Northfield and Rockside area, which has been a painful diminishing wasteland for the last 10 years. And it appears that we're going to see some really positive changes here soon. End of report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Posar.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. This Thursday, the United States passed the $20 trillion in debt mark. $20 trillion. 2007, that was nine trillion dollars. And I think what we're seeing in this country is a transition from a society that relies on borrowing and debt, as opposed to a society that's actually productive with jobs and bottom-line results. It's alarming, because in conjunction with this, we see our unions having to cut back on certain benefits, and they're doing that as quickly as next year. We see our cities and some of our states that are seriously in debt, to the point where it's impossible for them to get out of it. We see that in the marketplace, where health benefits are being purged, where people are working less on purpose just to avoid having to pay that federal government-imposed healthcare regulations. In conjunction with that, this council has talked about and now is acting upon, trying to do our part here when it comes to this budget. $200,000 is a significant amount of money. And that's what we're making an effort to do, unlike back in November, we passed a moratorium on... on suffrage to both sides of the property, to the neighbors, and say, can you come to a conclusion, and maybe split this piece of property, and they pay half and half, thereby extending their yards. So hopefully, anytime we raise a property, that option will be available, and after the land bank turns it over, and after it's cleaned up, we'll be able to do that. On a lighter note, and lost in the accolades that the Bedford football team is receiving lately, the Bedford soccer team is ten and one right now. And our own Nick Schaefer is the, I used to call him Nick Swisher. Nick Schaefer is the coach, and he's doing a great job with those kids, because the only team that they lost to was Upland. And kudos to them. Finally, I would request the council consider very quickly the abolishment of beggars' night trick-or-treat night on the streets in this up-and-coming Halloween. I think that other communities take their rec center and they utilize it very effectively on two days where during the day, the parents and the kids can go there and enjoy it and essentially have the same effect without the safety issues. And I submit that for consideration because I think our police would be delighted to know that, and our residents would feel more comfortable about that. And I believe that open daylight with these kids in a controlled environment would be much safer. That's it. Thank you.
All I have to add is, again, our condolences out there to people in Las Vegas, who, what a horrible place out. Somebody even thinking to do that. Just close your mind and wonder what goes through somebody else's head, and to do something is a genius, is that? I had the opportunity last week, sat down with the superintendent of schools and the mayor of Bedford Heights, and we met with a gentleman who must start a local weekly paper. I know a lot of people have been saying they've been wanting that. He owns seven newspapers, they've been doing it since nineteen fifty-seven or somewhere around there. So they know what they're doing. He came in not to ask for any money from the city, the schools to get it started, he knows what he's doing. His closest paper is the Shadrin Valley Times, so if you're out that way and see it, you'll have an idea of what he does. So if he comes around to some of the businesses, he's going to inquire about advertising, he's in a strictly gathering facts mode, he hasn't decided to do it yet, but I think it would be a good idea. We do have a monthly paper that goes around, we have the neighborhood news, but that's, you have to come and get it wherever they put them, so. His will be a subscription service, he starts it. We were very much enthused to have him start. He doesn't need our blessing, it's a private enterprise, he could start it tomorrow on his own. But did have the courtesy come in and talk to us, so if you happen to see it, or you know some businesses that might be interested, let me know, or his name is Ken Dofit. And I think it would be a good addition to our city. We always hear about, oh, we, we don't get a message out, we haven't heard it, and people miss the old Bedford Times, so this would be kind of a neighborhood paper like that. I know we got a lot of electronic stuff out there, but people still like their old newspapers, so we'll see what happens with that. And again, go try it, looking forward to these playoffs. Let's get back to business here.
I've got one important thing here. We had a bad fire on Hall Street in Ward Three. Colleen Knobach is the lady's name, and it was supposedly electrical, so it wasn't anything that anyone did. There is a fund going on right now by several people, I believe, so anyone that would be interested in donating anything, I think mainly money, would be appreciated. Colleen, no one was hurt, they got her, once again, our fire department did a phenomenal job, and the pets and everything got out safely, but it was a pretty bad fire, so thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance number ninety-five twenty-five seventeen. Lending ordinance number ninety-four zero five sixteen, establishing pay ranges as subsequently amended and declaring an emergency. Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Pocar. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Pocar?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Zalada.
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, what we did is we cleaned this ordinance up a little bit. We did add two positions, we eliminated one. Under section eight, we used to have the housing inspector that we have not had for some time. That one was removed, and we did include a business development liaison that we're working to hire and bring in, that's going to work with the city manager's office and the Department of Economic Development and Community Planning, as well as we're currently advertising for an assistant finance director, as was previously mentioned. None of the ranges, I believe, have significantly been altered, and again, this is just the beginning range.
Yeah, and these are not pay raises for people, it's just the starting range that we can use to hire people at it. There's a variance in there, a low and a high that we can hire, and so if somebody more experienced, and we can start a little higher. If they're not experienced, they can start a little lower. So it's, like I said, it's not a pay raise, it's just the starting salaries that we can offer when we're looking at jobs. And we want them to be, hire the best people, so. That whole chart is something we need to take a look at over the next few months, just to see if we're in the ballpark to get the people that we need. But some of these could restrict us from hiring some really good people, so. But it's just something to look at. I just wanted to reiterate, it's not a pay raise. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Pocar?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-five seventeen dash seventeen. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract on behalf of the city of Bedford with the General Health District of Cuyahoga County for health services for the year 2018 and declaring an emergency. Since this goes with money, we need a suspension by Spinks, second by Janudis. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Pocar?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Pocar. The Board of Health, this, just kind of a renewal, we do this every year. By contracting with the county, we don't have to have our own health department. According to state law, we have to have a health department, which would be a whole other level of the administration, which would entitle a director and secretary and all that stuff. So by contracting with the county, we get all those services, meet our requirement with the state for a reasonable price. And I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, Mike?
That's, you're accurate. Obviously, by law, we have to do that. And as far as the Board of Health, we realize that on our line. They work very, very closely with our building department, they've actually helped us address the issue at this school property that was previously mentioned in tonight's meeting, the properties on Archer and many others, where we bring in that outside organization to ask them to give us a full report, give us their professional opinion. This way, there's a third-party involvement, should there be any confusion or any type of conflict of interest, if that were to arise, we rely on them heavily. As Councilman Janudis mentioned earlier, that at the initial discussions of the property at Meadowbrook, I have to admit, I was surprised that they were previously involved in really trying to help this entrepreneur in another community, to the tune of really working with them to get them grant dollars that are available for those operations. And meeting with them and seeing that aspect of the Board of Health, I never knew that was there. And now, we do know it's there, and they're working with us, so definitely my swells kind.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Pocar?
Yes.
Now we come to hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, and your comments.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff Asbury, Seventy-one Eldwood Avenue. Some of you know that I was on the strategic planning committee that Beth Ozeo Stewart graciously put together for us. I was on the safety side of that committee, and Beth, one of the things that we came up for informational meetings for the residents. Beth had a meeting with retired officer Ron Borsh about three weeks ago, I believe, it was a safety-type meeting, and he came to Eldwood and gave a presentation, and it was pretty well-attended. So I thought to piggyback on that, that I would go ahead and put together something also. So I would like to invite everybody Wednesday, October eleventh, six to eight p.m. at Lex Hart Villa, where we're going to have a town hall-type presentation with the Bedford firefighters. Okay, so some of the things that they're going to come out and find out what they do on a daily basis outside of putting out fires and medical emergencies, some of the programs that they have for Bedford residents, I'm sure that'll be interesting. Kids, somebody asked about kids, kids are absolutely welcome, and there might be a surprise out in the park long for them. So if we can get a fire engine, we're going to do that. So I put some flyers together, and I will leave them up here on the podium, and if anybody's interested, and I'd love to see your best show up.
Thank you. It was October eleventh.
October eleventh sixteen, Lex Hart Villa.
Good evening. My name is Carla Miller, and I live at one-one-four, one-one-four Norand Circle. Was it the wrong address, was that what you were looking for?
Wrong address, yes.
But we moved to Bedford twenty-six years ago. We moved not knowing anything about Bedford, but just assuming it was a small-town friendly city. When we moved to Bedford, before we moved in, our insurance agent gave me a call because part of what their procedure is, is to go and take pictures of the house. So he took the picture of the house, and he called me, and he said, I just want you to know that I was over there, and I took the picture of the house. And while I was there, and this was, these were his words, and I remember them because of the words that he used. He said, while I was there, one of your fat, white neighbor ladies came over to me and said, well, you know, there's a black family that's going to move on the street, and now we're going to have loud, wild parks. That was our welcome to Norand Circle. In the years that we have been there, we have a large family. We have eight children, we fostered two white brothers for sixteen years, one of whom is serving now in the, in the U.S. Air Force, and the other is special needs, and we care for him in a home, we care for him in another home. In that time, and we don't have a large family, there hasn't been one family that was on our street who's ever invited out my husband and I to come to their home, except when they had a tragedy, and they invited us to come over and pray with them. One time. Welcome to Bedford. Welcome to Norand Circle. We've had numerous letters from the city concerning things that we thought, as a neighbor, if you had a concern about that, it was something that you'd go to a neighbor and just talk about. If you have a concern, welcome to Norand Circle. No neighbors come and talk, they talk about you, but they don't talk to you. On Sunday, on Monday, last Monday morning, we care for men and women with special needs. Some of our men and women are in the hallway now, waiting for me, because my husband had to go and provide a service for another individual with special needs. I parked my car, my van, in the front of the house for someone who assists us in caring. I walked to my home, which was two or three doors down, and about an hour or so later, he came over to me and said, you have a ticket? And I said, ticket for what? And he said, well, because of the signs that are up. I hadn't paid attention, they had been put up three days before, I hadn't noticed them. And so I am here because I immediately called Ms. Villers to say, can you tell us, tell me what's going on? And she said I could look in the minutes, which I did, and I printed those out and gave them to many of the individuals on the street. I also called, and left a message for Mayor, and he called me back. I left a message for Greg Pocar. There was, from what he said, there was some glitches with his phones, and I called him again, and we spoke at length. And I understood from the mayor, I said, can you tell us what's going on? He said he'd had some complaints, can you tell me how many? Well, I had a couple of complaints. Those were his words, a couple of complaints regarding the street that there was, the access for trash trucks and the access for buses on the circle. We live on a cul-de-sac. And I said, well, we have been here twenty-six years, and that hasn't been a problem with the trash trucks and with the buses, why is there a problem now? And he mentioned that Greg Pocar was actually, had actually brought this to the council and was in favor of no parking on any city street, because that was something that Bedford Heights, I guess that's something that either they do or they are entertained. I asked him if he would like that for his street to have no parking. We have no parking on our street between seven in the morning and four in the afternoon. And then overnight, which I understand overnight, and then if there's snow. If that's something that he would want. And he mentioned that he didn't want, he had voted for the limited parking, not the no parking, because that was originally the suggestion, there'd be no parking on Norand I said, in twenty-six years, we've had buses, we've had trash trucks, why is it now that there's a problem? In the minutes, it talks about safety, but in the minutes, it also says that the police chief and the fire chief said, there's no problem with safety concerns on the street. And if there was a problem with parking on the cul-de-sac, on the circle part, why is there no parking on the straightaway of the street? I spoke with Greg Pocar, and he said that he too had had complaints. What was the nature of those complaints? He gave me four, four things. One, there's a landscaper who parks somewhere. Now, I've seen him park, I've seen him park on the street, especially if he's doing his yard. I've seen him park in his driveway, especially if he's doing his yard. He does not park his truck there overnight. There was another, another was that there were, there was some resident of the street or residents who, the thought was that they were bringing trash in from other places to, and putting them with, putting it with their trash. What does that have to do with parking on the street? The third one was that there was drug trafficking on the street. That's a matter with the legal department, that's a matter with the police, what does that have to do with parking on the street? The fourth was, in the nature of what we do in caring for men and women with special needs, we have, and then having a big family, we have fifteen of twelve passenger vans, and that my vans were obstructing people's access, I don't know access to what, and to which I responded to Mr. Pocar, that if... And to which I responded to Mr. Bozart, that if there's a resident or someone that has told them that my vans have obstructed their access to and from their property, that that was a lie. And I will invite those people, if they're here tonight, to allow me to tell them directly that they have lied to him because I have been very careful as to where I park my vans. So consequently, where are we now? We are at a point where we cannot park on the street during the day. No one, unless there's a utility company or someone's coming through. That is not something, and if you've had a couple of complaints or ten complaints for some things that have nothing to do with parking, then this is something that I'm in opposition to. My husband is in opposition to. He was here. He had to go and provide some service for an individual with special needs. According to the minutes, Greg Bozart, Donna Saunders are the two that are mentioned in the council minutes as supporting this decision on the part of council. I'm here because I asked Mr. Kochy, what can we do to reverse this or to readdress this issue? This is unacceptable. This is not something, I guess this was something that was supposed to be a test case for Bedford, but it's an unfair test case. You picked the wrong street and the individuals who have complained to you have another agenda. And that agenda has a lot to do with our welcome to the street. And if you knew the kinds of things that have happened on this street with fellow citizens, fellow residents, who were supposed to be so very welcoming and you would move. You would move from Bedford because it hasn't been welcoming. It hasn't been friendly. And I know that the one thing you absolutely don't want me to say is what is exactly the way that a number of residents on the street looked at a lot of the original residents that were there before we came. And if I could share stories with you, I would tell you some things that would probably give you the same kind of reaction as when I told you what the insurance agent told me. And the insurance agent that told me, this is a white gentleman. So she felt comfortable enough to walk up to him and say, "This black family that's going to move on in is going to have loud, wild parties." You know what the first thing I had was? On a Saturday, a few weeks later, was a women's prayer breakfast. I don't know what we can do, what we need to do to readdress this, but it needs to be readdressed.
Hi. Hold on, hang on one second, please. I really apologize for how you were treated coming into the neighborhood. I know it's the first I've ever heard of it when I talked to you in twenty-six years. We have not had those issues in my neighborhoods. Everybody come in, they're neighbors. That's it. We talk to them, they talk to us, we go there and welcome. So I apologize for behavior if that's what happened in your particular case. I don't know what I can do to rectify that part of it, but as far as the street, we can always take another look at things. That's always an option. Greg, you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you. We, Smiller, we had a nice conversation regarding your position and what happened as you see it. The system works in such a way that when any council member gets input or any group of council members get input and address the issue or address the need, we do something about it. And I didn't do that, Saunders did. I introduced it. And I introduced it to seven people who actually voted unanimously to do it. Where you may be, what you may be referring to is originally, Mr. Saunders had talked about a parking ban throughout the city of Bedford, just like Bedford Heights does. And I was in favor of that, especially in the wintertime with two inches of snow. We mentioned that. I happened to live before on a cul-de-sac street and I live now on a street that I would in a minute enforce a parking ban if we could because it doesn't have curbs and it doesn't have room. That's button road. When I said to you this was a pilot program, that was my impression of addressing an issue without one-size-fits-all legislation. Addressing a specific issue in a specific area. We had adequate and sufficient concerns from this street over the years. What is regrettable is the racial undertone that's delivered here that started the minute you got into Bedford and it was transmitted through gossip from an insurance agent. I find that deplorable. I find it the, every one of these council members feels the same way when it comes to harmony. But when we get past the emotions of who hates who and get down to the issue at hand, which is simply, we are looking at four-fifteen passenger vans in a residential district that makes one ask and wonder, what kind of business is going on in that house? We are looking at repeated citations on the street for involving those vans, which are supported by the record, and you'll be free to know that. And we are wondering why that for a sixty-passenger capacity in a residential district where in, those vans are never parked in a garage. They're always parked on the driveway or on the street. It took another shape when we talked about landscapers blocking the street, blocking the circle. That was not an issue that should concern you, but that was an issue that was taken into consideration when we used the pilot program to address a number of issues on Norand Circle. Now, this group can't legislate morality.
That's what I told you.
We cannot do that. And I think I speak for each and every one of my co-council members that it's important if that is in fact the case. But that's the case from your perception and it's regrettable. I don't know if the other people that were involved in these complaints would come forward and state their position, but these actions were based on that input and the police reports and the continual concerns of the neighbors on the street. So we are at that level, at that impasse. In terms of redoing it, I personally would vote the same way, to do it all over again for those reasons. Until I understood why or what kind of a business is being operated there, and until I understood why the other properties in the city that also have your vans in it were maybe operating a similar business, perhaps you could address that.
I would be glad to. I don't operate my business from my home. No one lives at my home, at my home on Norand Circle. I simply parked my passenger vehicles, which is how their license, my passenger vehicles at my home. But I don't, I don't have, I have residential and I have, I do other things with my hands. I take men and women with disabilities on trips so that they can have opportunities to see things besides Cleveland or Bedford. I've been criticized for doing that because it's going to make the rage. I take them to Harvard. I take them to see a number of things that the criticism is, why do you take them on these, on these, what was the term, but just fancy trips instead? I said, "Well, what would you like me to do?" "Well, why don't you take them out to dinner and to Kennywood?" And I said, "Because they deserve the opportunity to see more than that." So I take them places and I take students from Bedford, many places. If you check with the high school, you'll see that the students that have gone with me have gone five summers in a row down to Tuskegee University. And in the process of doing that, they go to a number of schools. They go to Auburn. They go to Georgia Tech. They go to a number, Emory University. They go to Alabama State University. And they, when they're in Tuskegee, they're going there because there's a program there that has been in effect for twenty-six years by an alumnus who comes and volunteers his time. And he says, "If these students come in and for one week," well, we go for one week. He's there the entire month. I take them for one, these are kids, many of whom have never been out of Cleveland, never been out of the state of Ohio. And they go down there and they stay in the dorms and they eat on the campus and there's no cost. Tuskegee absorbs the entire cost. And they help with getting one of the dorms ready for the next school year. They learn how to plaster. They learn how to sand. They learn how to paint. They learn how to clean up. They learn things about light construction work. And one of them just got a job last week because this is a volunteer thing. But when these kids go there, these Bedford High School students, when they go there for that week, you should see how their shoulders rise because they are now contributing. And they walk around that campus as if they own it. And I've heard them say, because of this, to their parents, "I want to go to college." I don't just, just take the people that I provide service for. I do this for, and you know what? Before I, before I have the two new vans, the entire cost of those vans that I had to rent to go down there was something my husband and I paid for so that these students could have opportunities. Now, I have, I have vans that I want to park in my driveway. I park them there sometimes during the day on the street only because trying to get in and out is time-consuming. And sometimes I just need to leave or someone needs a van before the other. But you know what? I wasn't angry when I received the letter saying that I couldn't park there because it was a weight limit, that there was a weight limit on the vans.
That's right.
I wasn't angry because you know what? The Lord provided another way. My daughter went around and there's a church that says, "You can park here." And if I wanted, there's space there for twenty vans, if that's what I, I mean, I'm not going to do that.
Could I ask you a question about that? Would you entertain a question about that?
Absolutely.
The vans themselves are considered to be overweight for residential districts. Is that, does that your knowledge, what's going on with those vans?
When I talk with the building manager or someone, they said that it was, this is a new type of van. It's a fifteen-passenger van and the weight was over the limit that whatever. And that, I mean, I can't, I don't know when that ordinance was put into effect, but it doesn't defeat me because we were able to park it, park the other. The two that I have now are not. They are not over the weight. Those are older vans and they, they should be within the weight limit.
Well, what would you say to those that think that there's a business being operated out of your house?
Why don't they come and talk to us?
Oh, I mean, from a standpoint that many people here get input anonymously and they say, "We don't want to cause problems." And you go up, in other words, me or him or her, here, "You go do it because we don't want to, we don't want anybody to know." And if you said that, if you called me and said that, I would respect that privacy and I go do my job and report it. But what would you say to those people that say, "It really looks like the business is being operated out here"?
You know, a number of years ago, one of the individuals that we cared for used to walk the cul-de-sac just to get exercise. And we would, and they were very, they walked across the street and then down and around the circle and they would do this to get exercise. I got a call from the city manager, I think at the time, saying, "Could you come to City Hall and talk with us about this young lady? Because there's a neighbor on your street who's concerned about, who says that you're a wonderful family." You're a wonderful, these were, these were his words. "You're a wonderful family, but they're concerned about this individual." And I listened to what he said and I said, "We have all the certifications, all, everything that we need to provide respite for this individual with the County Board of Governors and Billings." And I said, "If the individuals that you, that talk with you, if we're such a wonderful family, why didn't they come and talk with us? If they know us that well, that we're a wonderful family, why didn't they come and talk with us?"
Well, we can answer for the neighbors, but my question, back to my question, because it's, this one individual you referred to is in your care. You appear to be a very warm-hearted woman. You're a good Christian lady and what you're doing is admirable. But from the standpoint of legality and the standpoint of the input here, what can you say to those that say you're running a business out of your house?
This individual at the time, it has nothing to, you can have, first of all, you can have a business address as your home, but I don't have, I don't have a place that is a business.
We're aware of that, Mrs. Miller. I'm asking you directly. How are you running a business out of your?
And let me say, the story, the story that I was telling you is that I mentioned to the city manager that if we were such a wonderful person, they, why didn't they come and tell us? And if they have fear of this individual, then they have no knowledge or they're just ignorant about those with special needs.
And would be unfortunate the city manager to have to answer that question not knowing their heart.
One of the things that we also encountered was, in the first few years, especially the first few years we've been, we were living there, is that there was an adult child of one of the, one of the original residents of that home who would walk the streets drunk often at night. And I told the city manager at the time, "They have more to fear from that individual or someone else that's a neighbor than they do from this individual that was in respite in our home."
I can understand that and I, apparently you don't want to answer the question as to whether you're doing business out of that house, so we'll let it go at that. And I'll cite the city manager if he wants to support some of the past reasons.
Just let me, let me just stop with my daughter. She's an attorney. I need to ask her a question.
Yeah, come on.
Mr. Curry, would you like to talk about it afterwards instead of the public's?
I have as, as a home address, which is where, for I guess legal purposes, you have to have an actual physical address. And so I have that as my physical, but I don't have clients that have, or individuals that are coming in and out of my home as an office. So my home, I don't have an office.
Would there be drivers dispatched from your home to drive us there?
No, they don't, they're not dispatched. They come, they go over to where my vans are parked or, and they go from there.
They're on your payroll?
Yes.
And that address is listed on your tax returns to the city?
The tax returns to the city are listed as my home address.
Which is on Norand Circle? We're addressing the questions from the residents. It's good that we can get your side of the story and we can further look at this in a civil fashion, even in City Hall, if you care to come in and talk to the law director or the city manager, but it's good that we can get it out and...
It's never been something that I was hiding. The, what has happened is...
We didn't know that. From the, from the information that comes in, it appears that something is going on. That's why we're responding.
I have never, I've never felt the need to hide anything. I wouldn't do something. I want to be above board. I want to be honest. My problem, my problem has been is that we have neighbors who don't want to be neighborly. They don't want to... They don't want to come and talk to you if you have a problem with something and you say that we're such a wonderful family. Now, look, they don't mind asking my husband about what's going on with our family. They've never minded that, never. They've been very, very nosy. And I have told my husband, please do not talk to these individuals about who we are and what you do because they don't care. They do not care, they just want to know your business. And I'm sure all of you have people on your streets who are like that.
Oh, yeah.
And when you said that this was a matter of gossip, of what my insurance said, it wasn't, he told me what she said. I don't know who that individual was, I never tried to find out. But unlike what I, what my normal personality would have been, I've never made much of an effort to try to get to know those individuals on the streets because, because this is the way that they act and this is the way that they think.
It's very difficult to know someone's heart or their feelings, but we have to address facts.
I don't really, it's one is act, things that have actually happened, things that they have actually done. And those are not, those are not open to, uh, to, to, to a determination, a judgment from me. It's, this is what you've done and this is what it, this is what it, how it appears.
But to get back to the issue at hand, uh, this council doesn't do anything based on who the people are or whether we look at what it is. There's no racial thing going on anywhere that we deal with this, this council.
Uh, uh, two years ago, there was a young man who, who used to live next door to us and he was very popular. He had, um, for prom, he had a lot of his friends come over. It was a very, very cold day and I was watching these young ladies in their gowns just shivering outside. Um, they, the kids parked on both sides of the street. I went out and I said, look, I'm leaving, why don't some of you park in my driveway? You're on the, you're on the parking, the side of the street where there is no parking because it's, it's where the fire hydrants are. Um, I left and when I came back, I found out that someone had called police because they were parking on both sides of the street. And I did see a UPS truck come down, it turned around and left because it couldn't get down the street. But someone called the police on them. Three weeks later, or whenever Father's Day was, I looked down the street and there in front of your former council member's home were cars parked around the circle and on both sides of the street. And I thought, well, I don't know if anyone's going to complain, but let me call the police and say, they're not supposed to be parked here because that's what someone did to this young man. But I said, no, I'm not going to do that, I'm going to go down and give them the kind of courtesy that they should have given to this young man. And I went down and I knocked on the door and I said, um, I see that if these are your cars, somebody's parked on both sides of the street, uh, and you might get a ticket because you can't park on this side. The response was, it's Father's Day, it'll be okay. And I said, it's against the law, I don't want you to get a ticket. And, uh, an adult child of that individual came up and said, you know, what's going on? I said, well, there's someone parked on the wrong side of the street. I don't want them to get a ticket, so somebody needs to come and move their car, which is what they did. Now, just this past weekend, there were cars parked on both sides of the street again. How do you call the police? And this is someone who knows your law.
Somebody should call the police.
So what should I do then from now on? If I see cars from someone parked on both sides of the street or at a time when they shouldn't be there, what should I do?
Call the police.
That's what it's about.
Am I going to be looked at as being vindictive or as a, as an outstanding citizen?
You don't even have to give your name.
Oh, you know what? People find out, they know. I, I don't need to try to hide anyhow.
Well, I'm just saying.
I don't mind giving my name.
Yeah, I mean, it's right and wrong there, that's...
I'm trying to be a responsible citizen. So you're saying that I should call the police anytime I see someone?
Yeah.
Actually, actually, yes. If there's a chance, if you'd like to, I'd be more than happy to sit down and speak with you about, um, the concerns on the street. Just so you, you know, one of the things that we looked at, because parking's been a topic for, has been a topic for a couple of years. Councilman Saunders brought up the, the parking as far as on, um, all the streets, I believe, a couple of years ago, that was cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets only, it's been a hot topic. When this street was actually proposed, we looked at it and, and I did want to let you know that, um, there is, I believe, I don't know the specific city, but there's another city that's doing similar as far as regulating parking. Um, Bedford Heights, it's no parking at all. There's another city on the east side that is looking to regulate the hours on some, on some difficult streets. Now, it's not Maple. But as far as the tickets, I know you've received a couple of tickets.
I, I don't know where that's coming from and I've had a lot of citations on my vans. I have not had, I don't know, I may have had one.
I, I, we've checked and...
On the van?
No, 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 just in general, not even, I don't, not even knowing the names. I just did a simple inquiry with the police and there's been, I believe, there's over eight, I think there's somewhere between nine and 11 parking citations on that street. So, so you know, you know how many you've gotten or not gotten. You can then determine if we've issued nine to 11 parking citations, that many other people are getting ticketed for, there's overnight parking, there's, so we are, but, you know, I don't even see an eight. I just see the date, when we were there, how many there were, and there's been roughly 11, I think, cite, I, I could check, there might have been one, two, it might have been specific parking, but there've been 11 citations, um, on that street just in the last year. So if you've gotten one, you can understand that there's 10 other individuals that are getting citations. So I'm not saying that that's, you know, the specific reason, but as Councilman Posar said, you know, looking at it, this was one street, you know, if it's a pilot program or to see how this is working, we're gonna, I, obviously that'll be discussed further. I know Councilman, um, Saunders and I don't want to speak for him, I believe he wanted and acknowledged in the minutes that he felt Logan, uh, Washington Court, he felt all of those should be no parking at whatsoever. We haven't gotten that part yet, it's ongoing discussions, um, but...
Well, how, tell me how you're addressing then, the, the justification for this, for safety reasons, if your police chief and fire chief say that there's, there's no concern to safety. And if it has to do with, um, uh, no parking on the cul-de-sac, what is the justification for no parking on the straight, straighter part of the street?
Because the police were not there at that meeting, the police made a general statement regarding the citywide parking. It was not, uh, it was not targeted to Noran Circle. And you saw that in the minutes, it was in reference to, there were no, the police chief was not at the meeting that those minutes were taken. And if it's referenced there, I think the city manager and the, the law director will support the position of the police chief that it is not a safety issue to close parking throughout the city. It's not a concern.
Mr. Mallison previously had a discussion with the police and fire department chiefs and they both are not concerned about the safety or police vehicles getting to the emergency call. This is in your minutes from August the 7th and I believe it's also repeated, uh, in your minutes from September the 5th.
My, my comment was the police chief was not there, it was secondhand, but the streets are public property, not public parking lots. So if they're regulated in a fashion that's, that's appropriate for the situation, we'll call that a pilot program.
So what, what, where do we go from here?
Well, as any ordinance we have, we can always revisit it.
So when might that happen?
Well, we'll have to put it on our agenda for, um, we'll do it in a couple of weeks.
Do you need more input from individuals on the street?
Yeah, we can get that and, um...
And in what fashion do you want those, a phone call, a note? How do people let you know how they feel about?
Most people call us up.
Most times in reversing an ordinance, it's done by petition. So that would be the standard by which someone, we have an ordinance reversed, not the tail wag and the dog.
So you're saying in most cases, but in this case, do you, are you requiring a petition or can it be put on your docket because someone is here to request that you do that?
We go and vote by the input that we have from our constituents and so far, the input that I had from the constituents on that street, I'm allowing it. So a petition would certainly be an order to be, it would be impactful.
But not necessary.
That's not my call, that's the law director's call or council as a whole.
So what are you suggesting?
I mean, I'm not sure what council's thoughts are, I think we should put it on our work session for next meeting perhaps. I mean, I don't know, but this week worked, if everybody's... I don't think we actually passed an ordinance that we...
What factors might have changed in the interim to have us reverse the action that this council has taken?
I'm not aware of that.
Mrs. Miller's presenting one side of it and most of what she's presenting is heartfelt, but none of it contradicts the facts that those vans are parked there, that they've been parked there repeatedly, there's numbers of tickets on the street, some of them are overweight and apparently there's a business being run out there. So say it like it is.
Yeah, and this is the first time here and you've said this story, we'll obviously discuss it and we'll go from there. I mean, it's, 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 I mean, I can't give you the answer right now.
So how do we know?
We'll put it on our work agenda for next, uh, forum discussion.
And then we'll have to go to the council minutes to see how this is fine?
If we decide to put it on the agenda, yes. We'll discuss it, we'll discuss it internally and then somebody will get back. I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alana Walker. I'm also a resident of Noran Circle. I live at 108. I see you had a great discussion with Miss Miller, but I'm here on my own accord. I'm also here in accordance because I was concerned with those, um, signs up on the street. Listening to the conversation that Greg Posar and Miss Miller saying that she was targeted or this action was targeted towards those people. But I'm, I've been a 24-year resident here in Bedford, probably 25 years. I raised two sons, they came out of Bedford schools, I've been involved with many of the things that happened here in Bedford, Boy Scout leader, things of that nature and things and so forth. My wife have, and I have been paid taxes here for those entire years we've been here. Now my sons are doing the same. I'm coming here to put on record that I also have concerns with those signs. I'm looking on here and wondering why Noran Circle was targeted to be the pilot for this. I have concerning issues with that. If it happened throughout the city, I don't have a problem with that, being, being many streets of the city being piloted to do this. But for that street to be piloted because of a targeted, sound like a situation where this...
That's absolutely false.
I'm listening and you just, you just, you know, this information and it sounded like it was, I'm just saying.
That was absolutely false.
From my ear, that's what it sounded like to me.
Okay, well then, from my, I said pilot, that was my interpretation of not doing a citywide parking ban.
You gave, you gave a reason. And one of the reasons was about the vans. I don't have vans, I have cars. My cars don't need to be parked on the street, I have people come over to visit, my sons have people come over to visit, and I have issues with if they have a problem coming to visit my home and that's going to cause them a problem.
Please, let's get past the targeted part because that's not the case.
Well, that's what it sounded like.
The pilot, the pilot part, I'll give you that.
Mr. Posar, I'm not arguing with you, I'm here to give, I'm here to give a statement. Okay? And then you take, why are you taking that as offense? I don't know. But I'm just here to give a statement. I'm another person that live on the street and that's, you know, I came here because you had a council meeting and I wanted to give my thoughts about those signs that I disapprove of. I was also, I came home on Sunday from work and saw those signs. Sometimes I park there as well to let my wife come into the driveway and things of that nature. And I found that I couldn't. So I have an issue with that and to find out, to look at your minutes and find out that Noran Circle is the only street in the city of Bedford that's pilots in this probably concern and that's why I'm here. So let it be, say it, that'd be great.
And, um, I'm on 101 Noran Circle also and a couple of things that...
Your name, please.
Oshari Smiller-Purn. And a couple of things that I would just like to understand, I guess, out of the four concerns, one of them was criminal or drug activity? Have you ever had any reports of drug activity on Noran Circle?
I have to check with the police on the specific report, I don't have, I merely just did a survey on the parking issues and that's how I came up with the 11 citations. I believe nine were specifically for overnight, um, as well as prohibited by any type of signage and things like that, there's been roughly, um, 11 of them. I can check any other complaints, um, some of those things I may be able to release depending if it's confidential through seal, um, but I, I can look into that for you.
Okay, well, I am an attorney and, you know, I practice, you know, with Mr. John Montello all the time in Bedford Garfield Court all the time. And one of the things that we always look at is, you know, facts and evidence before we make a decision. And a decision was made to put the parking bans on the street, one of the main activities that was, you know, somewhat, I guess, was happening was criminal activity. I would expect that before you allowed a target or a program or a pilot to be implemented on a street, that you would check to see if some of these accusations are actually true. So if you don't, if you don't have any understanding about criminal activity, it's probably because there hasn't been any drug activity or anything going on in the red circle. I mean, as long as you've been on that street, there is, it's very unlikely there's any drug activity or going on on that street, okay? Thank you guys. Can partly clarify, um, you could, you can check and see if that's happened, but in terms of, and then the second thing is tickets, 11 tickets in 365 days, that's not a lot of tickets. I mean, 11 tickets in 365 days?
What hours?
Yeah, and exactly, what are the hours? I can tell you that I got one of those tickets because I parked there before, what is it, 6:00 AM, I think, that's when the parking ban is? Um, and I parked there exactly at like 5:50. And when I got back to my car, I had a ticket on it and I know for a fact that I was, someone was on the street watching me and saw me park my car and called the police exactly right after, because I, I parked my car, got into another car, we took that car to go to the airport to drop off, um, some people and when I came back, I had a ticket on my car. And it was 10 minutes before 6 o'clock, I remember it distinctly and I'm sure someone was watching and called the police so that I could get a ticket. So I know that I was one of those 11 tickets. So then I would just ask you to check into the, the drug activity, if that's such a concern on the street, to see if that really is legitimate concern as to why there should be a parking
I promise I'm not talking about her. I appreciate that you guys wanted to talk about it, I just... Um, I'm Heather Rhodes, 241 Center Road. I had a few questions about the insurance and just wanted some clarification on some things. Uh, right now you said, uh, that roughly we're going to save about $200,000 a year?
Right now, current year would be under 90.
Does, uh, the insurance that covers the city council members also cover, uh, the rest of city, um, city employees? I know that the fire and police have a separate insurance, but does it apply to the other?
There is one group and council is within that group and it can't be separated as a separate group, yeah.
I, well, I'm wondering is how is the city...
Everybody's under the same coverage.
Under the same coverage.
Everybody has their own.
Um, and is the city self-insured?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, would you say that the, the money, so if we were to take away insurance from any seven members of the people that work for the city, that would be approximately the same savings?
No.
No?
I said we would.
Okay.
But I don't go around picking.
All right, so, because, because what I was looking at, um, I...
As a whole, I've looked at more.
Okay. Uh, I looked at the Kaiser Foundation and Health Research Educational Trust.
But as Mrs. Miller was talking, and, you know, with this young lady that you had... You know, I believe in dialogue because things can, it can open up the consciousness of certain things in certain people. And, uh, while Mrs. Miller was talking, I Googled how many African-Americans are in the city of Bedford, and it said 50.64. Although, it is in a lot of instances, I don't see any representation. And maybe even talking with this young lady, she can, I mean, maybe save us some money and we can hire someone for cultural diversity. Because she was here, Mrs. Miller has been here 26 years, and it sounds like this young lady's gone, has been here equally as long. But I can't say that I have been embraced either, and I lived in Bedford Heights prior to coming here. I've been told that my integrity was attacked, had been attacked, uh, as far as what material possessions I have. And believe me, I worked over 31 years before I went out on disability. I have had a bachelor's degree for over 35 years and certain hours towards my master. So I guess what happens is the media projects us as African-Americans in a very negative light because sensationalism sells stories. And unfortunately, a lot of other people buy into that, that we are an scrupulous group of people, but we are raised in families and we have goals. In my household alone, I'm a divorcee. There was a Mr. Walkner, so that's how I got some of my material possessions. And I do have family support when it was, I was accused of stealing, uh, electricity. I mean, so that, those are all attacks on my integrity. And I took it personally as an African-American woman. And I am not a thief. I'm a college-educated woman. I, my whole household right now is pursuing a higher degrees. And if she can save you some money or maybe insurances, let's hire someone on cultural diversity. I think people act the way that they act because they just don't know. You know, some, some ways or some, some, some programs or... I don't have the time. I'm not, I'm listening for a job for myself. I don't have time. Like I said, I'm pursuing a PhD right now, so I don't have the time. But somebody that can bring in these type of, uh, of things so that we can come... Because, you know, there's racial hostility throughout America. If you want us to be a different city, one that welcomes all ethnicities, why not do some things to bring us together and advertise it as such? Uh, I don't know what to call it, uh, something, something affair or whatever, but, uh, try to enlist some things when we can come together and find out that, uh, I am an individual that care about my community that I live in, uh, just like you do. And I've lived in other suburban, uh, communities, by the way. Like I said previously, Bedford Heights, Mayfield Heights, I've moved around, uh, solely for a short period of time. So this is not the first time I have enjoyed suburban life as also was accused. But, uh, that's just a suggestion of my own. Thank you.
I'm only getting up, Nancy Luchowski, 1971. I'm only getting up because I've been wanting to leave this meeting for a long, long time. Not with what's going on. There are things I'd like to ask also. But I think this council is gonna have to consider going back to what it was years ago, especially, I remember when Joe Zariano was here. And the meetings got to be discussions like this. And if there is a problem, they've got to talk with the leaders, get their problem solved. It is not, you know, it's, it's problems here. But it's come to the point where citizens wanna ask questions. And by the time you get done, they're so tired, they wanna leave. And I think it's something you could start considering limiting to 10 minutes a person. If they have bigger problems, then they're gonna have to talk with the leaders about it. But this is what we've had before, was 10 minutes per person. And it gives each one a right to come up and ask questions. So that's all I have to say, because questions that I was gonna ask, I hope that, uh, as the next meeting, I would have time to ask them. So I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good job, Mary.
David, 136 Center Road. So, uh, thank you, Marilyn, Wally. And I just wanna speak to the, to the ladies that were up here this, this evening. We do have some things going on that are trying to be inclusive. They're trying to change the way we were, um, in the past and create a sense of community and evolve them. It's unfortunate, I, I mean, I didn't get to see you down there on the square at all these, on these weekends, but the city has put together a Five Points Market, and they, they actually changed up what they do on Friday nights from what used to just be an old party in the park poker thing. And now they're trying to involve everybody and bring us together as a community. And everyone's welcome, and it's turned out to be the right thing. So, uh, I think the city's moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Jeff Duber, 134 Harriman. A couple of quick items. Opportunities, possible opportunities for the city, and I don't know if anyone has looked into this. When they started tearing down Randall Mall, the OTC business that was there with Ohio Technical College, they lost their, their place there. And I, I thought, you know, that would be an ideal thing to look at, the city, uh, to, to try and pursue that.
We actually, um, I wanna say it was 2014, Councilman Posar, we, and, and I actually stopped up there out of the blue. And, um, since then, I was able to identify the owners of that property , um, just through coincidence, spoke with them. The owner actually passed. They had no interest. They actually, their primary goal originally, even before the Amazon deal went through, they wanted to locate that specific, um, operation, which was Power Motorsports, downtown to enjoy the technical incident. So we did look at that, um, but we looked at that as early as 2014. Not to steal another, another city's business by any means, um, but we knew they were expanding rapidly, and I, I, I think it came up that it could be a possible location for it now. Um, I think that's how it evolved, and why we actually stopped there in 14. Um, I, I don't wanna speak for you. I can't really remember.
The other thing is, uh, the, uh, and this was in a Northfield paper. The Dolphin just closed up, and they apparently are looking at relocating someplace. You know, and, and that's another thing that, you know, we talked about. I mean, they do a good business there, and I think someplace like that would be ideal. We've been in contact with them already. And in reference to what Greg said about Halloween, I, I think maybe a first step to that would be to cut that down from two hours to one hour, because this is supposed to be a neighborhood thing. And, and certainly, kids in the neighborhood can get around to the neighborhood in and out. You know, having that as a two-hour segment, I believe, is just too long. And, and I think, Greg, that that might be a first step in, in the elimination of that. But I certainly think that as a step, that would be something to think about, to, to cut that down from two hours to one hour. And, and the last thing I wanna, wanna talk about real quickly. Over the years, council has had people address the city council who are running for political office. And I just wonder if this is a place for that to be done. You know, you've had people here running for judge. You've had people here running for county office. You've had people here running for state representative office. I personally don't think that this is the place for that to be done. I mean, that's something that, that should be done at groups that are, that are put together for that or, or groups, you know, places where that's set aside for that. I don't think that that's something that, that should be done at, at a council meeting. That's all I have. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, and roll to you for German. It's please a second by Janutis. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
There's a lot of yeses, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.